Hey everyone, how's it going? Can I get this to focus? Do I have to be close to focus? Yeah, I kind of do, don't I? Alrighty, this is gonna be a little interesting. I'm trying it for the first time. Ooh, I hate the hell this is trying to autofocus. I wonder if I get it more in the light, it's gonna do a better job focusing. Stop trying to focus, just... Stop trying to autofocus, just chill out. Okay, this is a bit of a test session. See, it'll focus on my hand. Okay, if I get it close, if I get the majority of what's in the picture to be the car, it'll stay in focus. Okay. Alright, that's what we'll do. Hey everyone, how's it going? Wouldn't be a live stream if it didn't start off a little weird. Let me do a real quick check. Um, just to make sure that my audio is sounding okay. I'm gonna just go to the livestream on my phone and listen. Hey, it sounds pretty good, okay. Alright, so this is what we're doing. Let me show you the car. Uh, it is shiny right now because I have a layer of gloss coat applied, you'll figure out why in a second. Let me show you the backside of the car. It's a little bit of a better representation. Um, this is not quite done yet either. I'm gonna do another layer of weathering over top of the... No, it's backwards too, which is kind of fun. Gonna do another layer of weathering over top of the car, just to tone down that a little bit. Tone down the graphics a little bit. Today, we're working on this side and in particular, we're gonna do a lot to this side eventually. Um, but in particular, we're gonna be applying the the number and reporting marks onto the car here, which are very, very tiny little decals. So, we're gonna be doing that tonight. And I'll show you the technique that I spent quite a long time trying to come up with. When we do. So, this is my decals. These are come from, who do these come from? Uh, this particular set comes from Microscale. And these are just a bunch of stencil. Gosh, I wish this thing would just focus. Apologize, gang. There we go. And like it'll focus then stop focusing. Um, this is just a bunch of stencil decals from Microscale. Just to give you an idea of the size we're dealing with here, here's a regular X-acto knife blade, so you can see just how small these decals we will be applying are. Um, first thing to do, of course, is always to um, start with a new blade. You know, the blade I have on there is not bad. Uh, it's not new. I went for years just kind of redoing, reusing blades as much as possible and a lot of the mistakes that I made on things was because of the blade being too dull more than anything else. So, the car will be lettered MFR1004. Um, and so we can see, kind of, we're already done on the one side, so we're just gonna cut out some more letters. This is kind of the most boring part of what we're gonna be coming across tonight, but that's okay. I want to do more of these workbench sessions in the future, if I can figure out how to get the focus issue to really kind of work for me. Uh, the biggest tip with these, when you're cutting them out, would be to just try to cut them as close as you can while still leaving a little bit of... Someone else is upside down and backwards, but can you focus? Still leaving a little bit of space around it so that you can kind of grab it. So, that's probably a little bit too much space on the one side of the F. Let's see if I can cut this a little bit closer. If you have too much of an overhang, it's gonna start interfering with the other letters. And that's not good. Nope, it went flying. Alright, that's probably good enough. And let's grab an R. I leave a little bit of overhang on top just so it's kind of easy to move, manipulate. Alright. Now, we got a 1, a 004. If I take a look at this and kind of see, yeah, I can do I can do quite a bit on the one side of the 1. Hey Isaac, how's it going? Alrighty, you've got Round the Layout Podcast is here as well. This is a bit of a test for me tonight, guys. I'm, uh, this focus issue is not making me happy. So, I'm gonna have to look into what's happening here with that. Cause you shouldn't have to deal with that either. If I can get a little bit further away, it just becomes less of an issue. Let's try that, sorry. I chose my numbers, um, based on the, I think it's the, oh, I'm gonna have it wrong now. I can't remember exactly which railroad I was looking at. I think it was Cedar Falls. There's a short line that had their boxcars numbered, starting in the 1000s. And I thought that that was a pretty good number to start with for freight cars, was 1000s. Cause it just, it just kept, you know, it keeps it to four numbers, so I'm not like decal-ing a bunch of numbers on the sides of this thing. Alright, here's the 4. Oops. Get it in a camera view, so you can see. Evening John, how's it going? Alright. Okay, now I have all of my numbers and all of my letters. And we are ready to start laying on tiny, tiny ass little decals. Okay, so this is how I do it. And I've got, what I've done is, I've, um... Alright, sorry about that. Um, so what, this is what I did. So, I've gone ahead and I've done it on the other side and it has taken me a few times of working at it to get it right. Come on, focus, you stupid ass camera. I'm so pissed off with this camera right now. There we go. Oh, um, what I've done is I sprayed the entire car with a gloss coat and I used a Vallejo gloss coat, just spray gloss in the can. It's very shiny right now. We'll go back and we'll dull it down later. What that gloss coat does is it gets rid of what's called silvering in the decal. And I could show you on the back of the car, an example of silvering. So, if we take a look at, and if I can of course get my camera to focus on it. Um, right here is a little decal that I applied. It's very thin black, supposed to look like a, you know, like a very thin black, um... piece of graffiti. But if I turn it towards the light, you can see how the film really shows up. You can see the film on the side of this one as well. And that film is called, that's called silvering. This is, this happens because on this side of the car, I did not apply any gloss coat. So, there's some air bubbles that kind of get caught underneath the decal. And it's just because the, I, I had applied, once I, once I got done with the weathering, I applied a, um, a dull coat over the top of it. And that dull coat actually has a textured surface that helps scatter the light. And that textured surface actually cap, traps air underneath the decal when you apply the decal. And so, that's what creates that silvering look that you see on the side of it, uh, there. So, to combat that, which is what I did over here, I went over here later on and I applied right over the top of this area right in here, before I did these decals, I applied the gloss coat, laid down the decals. And as you can see, as I turned the model, you're not seeing that silvering effect. It's a little shiny right now because it needs another layer of, um, dull coat being applied to it, but you can see that's, you can't see where the edges of the decal shows up. So... Let's take a look at the graffiti on this side of the car. Now, it's very shiny because of that gloss coat. But we're not seeing the edge of the film anywhere. And especially just take a look at this white decal right here. Actually, let's take a look at this one over here. This one might be a little bit better one. You can kind of, if you're, if you're really looking for it, you can see where the edge of this decal. That's just the raised sort of decal sitting on top of the, of the paint. Um, but once I dull coat that down, that should go away. You shouldn't really be able to see that highlighted, reflected edge very, very well at all. So, that's what we're gonna do right here. Um, so we're laying down decals over top of this gloss coat. And that's why you want to apply gloss coat to these. Alright, so we're gonna apply the letters MFR, and I realized my camera's backwards. At least on my screen, maybe it's okay on your screen. And then 1, 0 on this side of the rib, and then 0, 4 on that side of the rib. So, I'm gonna start right here. I'm just going to lay the M, the F, and the R right out here. I'm gonna start with the R though. I'm gonna lay it on this side of the rib, I'm gonna go that direction. Cause I kind of want to line things up kind of in the middle. But use this rib here as a guide. So, the R will be the first letter that we apply. And I've got some water, it's just off camera. Let's go ahead and pull that into view. And where is my? Here it is. I've got a nice little set of tweezers. And what I'm gonna do is oh, you know what? I got a couple more things I gotta prep before I I'm totally ready to go. And first is, just gonna get a couple of small sheet, small edges of paper towel ready. Put that over there. That right there. Just get a few small sheets of paper towel. Then I gotta get some uh, I'm gonna get some Q-tips, which is on the other side of the room. Alright, a couple of Q-tips. Okay, so first thing we're gonna do do, 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 do. Let's go ahead and add a little bit of water to the surface of the car, just to pre-wet this. Now, if you look, go on YouTube and you watch others, um, discuss uh, ooh, what did I do? Did I just ruin that R? I did, I just ruined the R. Yep, I ruined the R. Okay, let's cut out another R. I scratched the R with the tweezers and I ruined it. Okay. New R. Now, if you watch some other people on YouTube and they talk about decal-ing, they're gonna talk about Microsol and Microset. And with larger decals, those two work great together. On smaller decals, not so hot because what they're gonna immediately do, well, actually, let me, before I get into that, let's go ahead and I'm gonna stick this in the water. And I'm gonna hold it in there for right around 30 seconds. Maybe a little less. Okay. That was a little less. Could've worked. Alright, and now, oops, I just dropped it. Gosh darn it. We're gonna put there it is. Oh my gosh. That's what happens when you look at the camera and not what you're supposed to be looking at. Alright, so now I'm gonna lay it on to my car on top of the water that I had placed on the car already. And that's just gonna be a matter of just sliding the decal itself off of the paperback and onto the car. Oh my gosh, I'm off screen. Here we go, sorry. Okay. And at this point we're not using any Microsol or Microset. We are just using water. Come on. Okay. And I'm going to go ahead and get a little more water onto the car. And this is the part where we carefully adjust until we are happy with how that looks. I think I'm pretty happy with how that looks. I'm gonna put the M right there, the F right there, and the R right there. Let's take a little piece of paper towel. We'll soak up the excess water kind of around it. See how it just kind of wicks up the paper towel like that? So, my mistake before there we go. My mistake before was trying to set down some Microset, which is the blue bottle. And then putting the decal on there and then trying to move the decal around. The reason why that was a mistake was because it would actually soften the decal. And as I would try to move it around and place it right where it needs to be, it would break the decal apart. So, with larger decals, that's not a huge deal because it's a little bit easier to sort of place on there and move around. With a smaller decal like this, once it starts to break apart, it really starts to break apart. Um, so by just using water to place the decal on there, once I have all my decals on here, then I'm gonna go back over top with the Microset. That'll soften the decal down, that'll lay it on to the model nicely, it'll adhere to the model, and then it'll be ready then um, to, uh, put a layer of dull coat over the top of it to sort of seal it in. So... At the risk of screwing up the focus again, we're gonna go ahead and dip this one in the water. I don't like letting go of it because it it gets difficult to pick back up again. And sometimes it'll slide off the back while it's in the water. Well, that's, well, it's still in the water. I'm gonna place a little bit of water on the model. See, I don't like, I don't like it being like that because now picking it up is difficult, okay. I have it up. I'm going to place it. Focus. Placing it on the model. Where's my toothpick? Okay. And we're not gonna get it perfectly on the model where it needs to be just yet. Really what we're focusing on at this point is getting the decal off of that paper without ruining the decal. Come on. This is really the hardest part of this whole thing is just, there we go. Try not to touch the decal part itself. I'm trying to touch the film around the decal. Cause I don't want to ruin the decal, okay. So, it's on there. Woo! Let's get a little more water over top of it. That way it'll float a little bit. Then comes the part where we kind of reposition it. I hope this isn't focus. It's in okay focus. We can see how the R is kind of getting adjusted a little bit there too, but that's okay. And here's another trick. I chose stencils for my decals because if they're not perfect, perfectly applied to the car in just the right position and everything aligned perfectly, I can say, "Well, that's because they were stenciled on, right?" The guy who came and applied the marks to the car, they just had a stencil. I don't like how far away these guys are, but I don't know. Think I might've Let's add a little more water. Yeah, these are gonna float again once you add the water, which is fine. Some of this is getting it to the point where I think it's close enough and then just calling it good. Alright, let's go ahead and soak up a little of that water. That's good. Isaac says, "This makes me want to get custom decal for all my patches." Yes, I am going to order a bunch of custom decals for my patches, especially for the, uh, the marks that go on the end of the cars. I can't remember what they're called, like, I don't know. End car reporting marks or whatever they're called. Yeah, those are gonna get those are gonna get custom, just because they're so tiny. I'm not gonna do it like that individually. Um, but I agree. I, after doing this on this car, I think I'm ready to call Circus City decals and say like, "Hey, I need a bunch of custom." Need a bunch of custom decals done for patches because I would much rather just lay on one on, lay on one decals, plus lay on seven tiny, tiny, tiny ones. Okay. Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and lay this under here for about 30 seconds. Sorry for my hand being in the way, but you know, here, there we go. Oh crap, not what I wanted to do at all. Just dropped it to the bottom. It's another thing I hate about these tiny, tiny decals is uh, see, now, see, up. The decal just lifted off the paper. So, I think I've just, unless I can no, I'm not gonna be able to catch it. I'm trying. Alright, well, I caught it. Nope. I don't know if I should do this or not. We're gonna, we're gonna try. Alright, I just caught it. Alright, let's see what happens if I stick it on here like this. That was a case of me um, holding it under for too long. It looks like the decal was okay though. That's funny. Come on. Oops, see, I just messed up the F. I should've had this card in weeks ago, but I was putting off because I hate this part so much. It's not bad, it's just I'm putting on my rear glasses. It's not bad, it's just tricky. Tricky. I'd like that F to be a little closer to that R. There we go. I can get that M a little bit closer to that F. There we go. That's not too bad. I'm going to call that good before I go too far with it. So I'm just going to go ahead and I'm going to soak up some of the rest of that water. I'm going to let this dry fully and then I'm going to lay down the um. It's not perfect, but it's pretty darn close. And for stencil decals, I think pretty darn close is pretty good. Alright. So now we got four more to go. We got three, three down, four to go. We're going to do the zero, the one zero zero four. So I'm just going to do this one first. I'm going to do a zero and one and then zero and four. In that order, using the. Bracing here is kind of a guide. So once again, we are going to. Dip our decal in water. And I'm not going to hold it under as long as time. So they don't lose it. Oh, I just dropped it off. Okay. Come on camera, focus. Camera is letting me down tonight. Alright. See if I can slide this, uh, sliding off, here we go, sliding the letter off of the backing is because it's so small. And you don't want a whole lot of edge around it because you don't want that. Um, interfering with any of the other. Letters. Gets to be tricky. I'm going to kind of scoot this right up towards the edge of the. And as long as that's centered, it's a little low. Say a little bit of water. Or a lot of water. Want to be up near the bracing and then kind of centered on the car. And it looks like it's sticking out a little bit on the bottom. This is where you're like, okay, custom decals are really not that expensive after all. That looks pretty good. Let's go and soak up some of the water around it. We're going to be applying more water, but just to kind of. Get it on there. Okay. Now. The hardest number in that it is. The smallest number as well. And I'm going to go ahead and just soak it off camera. Since the camera's nice and in focus right now, and I don't want to screw that up for you guys, but you've already seen it done. Several times already. I think tomorrow night I'm going to work on touching up some of the graffiti decals I put on there. Those graffiti cows are fun. And one of the trickiest things about them is laying them over like all the ribs and everything. And uh, when you do that. This one is upside down. When you lay more of their ribs, they rip and stuff. And so you kind of have to go back. And uh, touch it up with paint afterwards. Alright, let's see, this wants to push off the top and I'm going to let it. Here we go. So you can see why you don't want to put any microsol on here right now because you are playing with the decal so much. You're moving it around so much, you don't want to. You don't want to rip up or anything. Which will easily do. If it has been softened. The microsol. Or the micro set. Okay, this is a little high. That's a little low. And it just keeps going back forth between being too high and too low. It looks about right in person, but then it looks really high on the camera. See now it looks a little low in person, but it looks much better on camera. I'm just kind of going back and forth. Come on. Yeah, it's a little high. That's about as good as it's going to get. Matt, ever consider rub ons? Uh, I have a set, I haven't used them. My guess is that it's going to be even harder with a rub on. Only because you don't have the ability to kind of adjust it. As you go. At least that's my understanding of how rub ons work. They're kind of a one and done, right? So you got to get it just right. But. I could be convinced otherwise. I've never done them, never used them, so I'm not speaking from experience here. Oh shoot, I just dropped the decal again. Keep doing that. Dropped it on the roof. Yeah, just a little water over top of this. There we go. You can see it really floating on there. But that's fine because look how easy it comes off now. Let's get you over to where you need to be. And we can soak up some of this water. There we go. Those little pieces of paper towel are. Marvelous. Sometimes they go on well and sometimes they don't. And. Just to be clear, I am a novice. I have not done a lot of decaling at all. So I'm just doing what I've. Sort of discovered, but there can certainly be better ways of doing this than what I'm doing. That's not too bad. Yeah, I'm going to leave it. Last number. Numeral four. I'm going to soak this in the water. Okay. Lay it on there. If I can just slide it off without having to use the. Yep, I can slide off without having to use the uh. Tweezers. Which helps, I think. Beautiful. Yeah, a little bit more water. Might be a little too much water. By the way, if this isn't working for you guys, if you're struggling with numbers and you rip a number or. You lay them on there, you don't like how they look, just go ahead and do it again. I, I don't like having to redo things either, but sometimes. It's bugging you that much. You can go back. And make it better the second time. You have learned some skills along the way and gotten better looking stuff at the end, luckily. So I redid the backside like, I don't know. Three times, I think, before I got it right. And this side, I think I'm going to be able to do it in one. Next time use a pill bottle lid for small decals, makes them manageable. That's a good idea as opposed to this big old. Tank of a Tupperware that I have. That's just a smart idea. Okay. It looks more crooked on screen there than it does in person. I think that zero might be a little crooked. That might be throwing me off a little bit. I'd like to get that zero a little closer to the edge. Again, if it's not perfect, it's not the worst thing in the world. I think that looks pretty good. F four looks crooked on camera, but in person. It's looking pretty straight. Okay, I'm going to call it good. Like I said, these are stencil decals, so you know, maybe the guy wasn't holding the stencil perfectly straight against the car body. We're going to let that dry and then we're going to go over some microsol, but before. We do that, let's go ahead and take a look at this other decal. That I've laid across here. This decal. Is um, oh, who made this one? I think this was from Circus City. Pre sir, pre sure. No, you know what? I think that might be micro scales as well. Well, in any case. You can see especially right here. Where the decals ripped. There's a couple of places. There's a rip right here. You see that rip right there? Um, there's some rips kind of along the. Edge of the ribbing here in here. We're going to weather this all down to hide a lot of that. But on top of it, I'm going to go uh, touch it up a little bit as well. Pardon me. So we're going to use some. White and some blue in order to, to touch that up today. And I'm using. Um, Vallejo colors to do so. So let me grab a palette here. Shake them up real good. Yeah, we're just going to do the white ones first before we do any of the others. So I'm going to grab a nice tiny brush. Let's see, this one looks like it's in a really bad shape. Maybe not that one. Yeah, maybe not that brush. This one's pretty good. Shave is a number one. What we're gonna do is we're gonna kind of go in here, touch up that white. Just grab a little bit of paint on my brush. And it doesn't really matter if the colors are a little off, because we are gonna go where this is weathering and weather it all down, and that'll help sort of blend it all in. I'm trying to do, more than anything, is mask like all these rips and tears too. So here's the little bolt patterns here, they got sort of screwed up a little bit. There we go. All right. Now let's add just a touch of blue. Don't need a lot. And I'm not, this blue's gonna be, it's gonna be off. Yeah, it's gonna be let's see, I gotta a little bit of green? No, they don't have green. Do I? Nope. Nope. My paint collection is not very big right now. Didn't think I'd be using a lot of green for weathering. That's all right. Wanna add a little green just to cool down that blue a little bit. This area is underneath the boxcar, it's probably not gonna be seen by anybody, but especially when I weather it down, but might as well do it anyway. Mix up a little bit more blue. So this is kind of the best of both worlds when it comes to decaling, because I can take advantage of somebody else being just a really talented graffiti artist. And let them do a lot of the hard work of designing the graffiti. And then when I lay it on, you know, one thing that's really good about painting your own graffiti is that you can lay it on nicely on top of all these like rough and raggedy surfaces. Right? That's definitely a, uh, a plus. But what I like about the decals is when they go on, you get them looking smooth, they look pretty good. And then you can just touch them up with just touch them up with a paintbrush. So if somebody else does all the hard work for you. I'm probably gonna attempt my own graffiti work one day. I'm just not just not 100% ready for it. Okay. Let me look over this a little bit more, see if there's anything else I want to do. That green the rips in the green are pretty apparent. But I'm just gonna have to use some weathering to sort of cover those up, because I don't have a green color. Pardon me. I don't have a green color to take care of that myself. So, um, let's see if I can soak up a little bit of this paint. So I'm gonna add some weathering in that spot to kind of hide the rip. So there's a little bit of a rip right here, so we're just gonna paint over top of that. This spot's not going away, but you can't really see it, so I'm just gonna leave it. Okay. One more spot we can grab. Okay, cool. Give that some time to dry. And while that's drying, let me show you what I do. I try to take care of my brushes as much as possible. So I've got this little brush cleaning and preserver, so I just take a little bit of water. And roll my brush on it. It's just a little bit of soap. Get that brush looking good again. Focus. Focus. Well, you get the idea. Okay, these numbers, I think, are ready for a little bit of microsol. Gosh, this camera focus thing is a huge nightmare. I apologize. So I'm gonna add a little bit of microsol to these things, so I'm gonna get a brush. I'm using Microset, actually, I'm sorry, the blue bottle. And I'm just going to carefully cover it. And I'm not gonna like press hard or anything. I'm gonna let that dry. There's a little spot right here that could use a little bit more. The secret with these guys, was laying these graffiti on and get them to kind of lay over these really awkward spots is lay down a microset. Lay down your decal. Let it dry, or lay down sol on top of it, get it to lay down as much as possible. Let it dry. Let the camera focus. Come on. You jerk. There we go. Gosh. I just saw a spot I wanted to fix right in here, so we're gonna do that. Yep, so lay down, let it dry. And then go back over it a couple of times. So you can see how this is a little purplier than the decal around it, but once we kind of weather it down, you won't really even notice it. So then you lay down another layer of microsol on top, soften it up even more, let it dry. Lay down another layer, let it dry. Do it about two or three times. And each time you do it, it'll get a little softer, and lay down a little bit better. Until it lays down all those rips pretty good, pretty tight. You will get rips and stuff like that along the way. That's just kind of how it goes. But that's what this stuff is for. For fixing all that. All right. Cool. Pretty happy with that. Give me a second just to clean my brush again. I wonder if I need to start doing these from like a wider angle than what I'm doing here, if I need to be this close or not. Okay, uh, what are we doing here now? I wanna add a little more graffiti. Some tags. So not the pretty kind, but the ugly kind. I've got a couple of tools for that. One is this guy right here. Micron pen, which I think you can get those at Walmart. And then one is the Jelly Roll, which is a like a gel roll pen. Which you can also get at Walmart. So the Micron pens, I think, are the easiest to apply. So like you can put these little tags, like you see them a lot of times, like where the kids will climb up on the, uh, grab irons there and kind of put a little picture or something right there. So I'm gonna put like a little K with a with a, uh, crown right here. And I'm gonna actually move the camera out of the way so I can do it. So we get the camera up higher. What's cool about these is they don't have to look perfect, because they're just tags. They're not like pretty. They're not gonna be pretty. So something like that. You might say, what the hell is that? That doesn't look like anything. And that's what most tags look like to me. It's like a lot of nothing. We do another one on this side. This one I'm gonna do a little different. I'm gonna do a little little peace sign with a sun. Okay, we can do, do we want to do any others on here? Let's add a little something right here, a little loop or something. It's just a little something. Doesn't really look like much, but it looks like maybe it was something that was painted over at one point by the other decal, by the other graffiti piece. Okay, I'm not gonna do too much. I did a lot on the other side. Let's take a look at the other side. You can see some of the ones I did on the other side there. Oops, maybe I shouldn't be turning this over while I got these decals drying on here. Anyway. Now this gel roller, the only tricky thing about this is that sometimes it takes a little bit to get the ink flowing. So I got this little scrap piece here. Come on. Let me try a different pen. Come on. You guys didn't dry it up on me, did you? There. Get this thing flowing. There we go. I'm gonna put my initials right here. You didn't even see me apply it. Put my initials right there. Okay. Just adding a little something extra over here. It went on a little heavy, but it'll get weathered down, so it'll be fine. I'm gonna have just another little piece right here. As if that's getting painted over as well. Okay. And we'll call that good, before we get too crazy with it. Went a little crazy on the other side. Just playing with some things, and some of them came out better than others. But, uh, I think on this side, I think that that's enough. Okay. And as I'm looking at it, I think I'm good. I think I've done about everything I want. And as I'm looking at it, I think I'm good. I think I've done about everything I want to do on this for tonight. Yeah. I'm pretty happy overall. What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna let this dry completely. Then I'm gonna go ahead and seal everything in with a dull coat. Once that's sealed in, then tomorrow, I think tomorrow, I'm gonna come back and we're gonna finish weathering this piece. I wanna see if I can figure out the focus issue I was having tonight. Maybe I just need to like just start working from like 40 feet away like this. We're gonna finish weathering. We've got trucks to weather up. We got side stuff to weather up. Finish weathering that up and then we're going to go back and apply. During this weathering job, I broke off the stirrups, so I got some new ones. We're gonna go back and we're gonna apply the stirrups. We're gonna paint them. So we have a few more nights of work. This car is turning out to be quite a bear, but I think it's looking pretty good. So thank you for joining me tonight. Thank you for putting up with, uh, all the focus issues and everything I was having. Let's see, we are a little over an hour in. So about an hour's amount of time, I got some cool work done to the decals. Got some painting done to fix up some graffiti. It is a little bit of additional graffiti on top of all that as well. That was cool. And I thank you for joining me on my, one of my very first sort of work sessions from live from this angle. And yeah. I'm rambling, so I'm gonna call it. Thanks again for joining me. I'll see everyone in another video.